Basically, cult order. And all the board members are here except for Jacob. Or Jacob, he's over there, okay? Something went wrong, I thought he went off. And there's Eric. So we have everybody here, which is a great thing. We will just move right into communications and Donnie.
Last couple of weeks has been pretty good. We've had a lot of inspections done. We had our auto lifts inspected out in Land Trance. Everything passed. Our lifts, high lifts today were checked and passed. The boiler inspector was here yesterday. Everything is up to par and he checked this off as good to go. We had a revisit from the fire marshal today. He came and inspected back in January. And we had everything done but, excuse me. We've got three science rooms in the high school that are over 1,000 square feet. And he would like to see a new exit door in each one, that we'd have two exits. Well, Jay Thompson's main room has an exit through his office out into another classroom. And the middle classroom, they can go back the other way. But Jesse Rasperson's only has one exit. So we kind of had a discussion about that today. And we could cut a hole in the wall going into another classroom. Or he said we could probably put up an occupancy or so many, you know, so many kids in this class only, which would be 30 or so, which I don't think would harm anything. But he's still looking into it and I gotta get back to him tomorrow. Because he's, the biggest thing is hazardous substances in the room. And Jay has most of that on his end. So we might get by with just a little fixing here and there. I don't know how it's gonna go. Talk to him tomorrow. The other issue we had, I called Horizon Roofing today and we had Sandy Linecker was up to wax the floor Saturday and it rained. And of course, rain is coming into the elementary school cafeteria. She looked up and there's no skylight there. Evidently, they set the skylight on and forgot to screw it down. So the wind popped it off. And of course, it was the vice president of Horizon and his foreman. And the foreman said, "I personally screwed all them down." And I said, "Well, you personally missed one." So they're gonna take care of that part. Other than that, the only other issue I have is if you know anybody out there that wants to be a night custodian, we sure are looking for some help out there. That's it. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Donnie. So then, we are gonna move right to B.
So we have the, first up is the staff handbook. Mr. Arline and Ms. Holberg are gonna talk to you both. They are on, they're just on for the camera. So you don't need to do any beatboxing or anything. This will not be the Karaoke Room this year, okay? So I'll turn it over to them and they'll go over the changes with staff handbook and also answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Well, one thing that we did that was new this year is we combined the staff handbook for everybody, all certified staff, pre-K through 12. And in doing that, I think we were able to eliminate some of the overlap that was happening with the handbooks and also gave us a chance to really walk through the handbooks and streamline some of the information and update some of the information. A lot of the changes were really just updates and putting policies, creating links for policies and things like that. Did you have any questions about the staff handbook? Some of the things that were addressed?
We did leave a section at the end, toward the end of the handbook, specifically for elementary and specifically for secondary teachers, things like recess, junior high school wouldn't have that. One of their areas, but the elementary would. So we delineated some pieces of it, but most of it was relatively easy to do for a K-12 staff or pre-K-12.
I thought it was very clean and very well organized. That's what struck me mostly.
Good. Any other questions on staff handbook? So the intent moving forward with this is that we will have one staff handbook for the entire district. We are not going to have a separate handbook for the elementary school and a different one for the secondary building. It will be one for the entire district, so there may be nuances that need to, that may look like they're a little redundant because it's a little slightly different in the elementary than secondary. But I think it works and generally it's a one-stop shop, so to speak. It's one place where everybody can go to and that's kind of the direction that we're moving in. All right, let's go on to the student handbooks then.
Great. So we'll start with the elementary school handbooks. Lots of the changes that we made this year had to do with Infinite Campus, with the new portal that we're using for our student information system. So those were the big deals. We also really tried to tie the student parent handbook in with the staff handbook in that we shrunk those policies down to just the descriptor and our policy and then linked the entire policy because everything's electronic right now. Those were our basic changes. We had to update meal fees and emergency weather procedures because some of those were out of date. And again, the online payment systems, you can see some of the things that we did. With the move of Diane Schultz to a Title I classroom, Audra became our sole supervisor for our school patrol at the elementary school level. That was another change that we made. Do you have any questions on our elementary handbook?
Again, I thought it was very nicely done and very well organized. And the links, I think, for parents when they get on there is awesome. So parents can get on that thing and maybe know right where to head. Very clean, very well organized. It's, I have to tell you, the handbooks have been kind of an issue with me for a number of years. I didn't really like them. They looked more like a copy and a paste. Well, anybody can do that. This is very nicely done.
Just one important thing that the board needs to remember about this year and the policy work that you're gonna do. So last year, we had our first year of that policy cycle. The goal here is that all district policies will be reviewed on a three-year cycle. So last year, it was really kind of the easy work because we did the 100, 200, 300, and 400 series, which they're critical to our existence and who we are. But it's a lot of stuff that's defined by statute. So this year, the focus of that policy cycle for the board is going to be the 500 series policies. 500 series policies all relate to students. That is the sole purpose of the policy work that the board's gonna do this year. The nice thing about the way these handbooks are being laid out is as the board does their policy work throughout the schedule that's laid out in front of us for the school year, we will be able to go in to these handbooks and simply swap out the link for Policy 514 for Policy 506. And it won't require us to reprint the handbook or resend it or do a different, a second edition of the handbook. It will be a digital handbook that will be able to be real-time and shared with all students. It will reside in their Google Drive. Since they aren't the owners of it, they technically won't be able to delete it. They can try and throw it away, but it's still going to be there. But it will be nice having it be a digital handbook because as the board completes its work this year, it will just be a matter of then putting the updated student policy that's in the handbook right back into it.
I have a question. So typically, if they're like added and addressed on an annual basis, if there's changes that are done throughout the year and it's a policy change, is there any sort of, should there be a track change? I mean, I don't know. I mean, if there's something updated and people are used to like, these are updated annually, is it important that people know?
So in the secondary one, if you look underneath the vision statement, there's a statement that reads that they may be changed or amended during the school year. And that everyone would be notified.
Yeah. And so then the other piece to it is there are a list of policies, and I do not have them memorized off the top. I had that do require annual board review. Those are always the last work that our policy committee will do. So I believe it was policies that the board read for the first time in April and then approved in May of this year. Those are the policies that require the board's attention every single year. And we will continue that process. So as we get into these 500 series policies, you're gonna see a little bit of redundancy because I am gonna wanna stick to the schedule. But at the same time, we are gonna be reviewing all 500 series policies this year. Okay? Any other questions as far as the elementary student handbook is concerned?
That can be edited, the discretion of the administrator at any point in the year, right? In terms of this?
So I think what, there's a, there's a big thing to discern. Are you talking about a technical change that aligns with practice or are you talking about something more substantial?
I guess either or, really.
If you're talking about something more substantial, that should come back to this body. Ultimately, this body is responsible for approving our handbooks. So if there would be a technical change that would be needed, say, the legislature changed some wording in a statute and it still aligns with practice, I think that's something that, yes, the technical change could certainly be made. If there's something more substantial where it's actually impacting practice, that's something then that this body should take a look at that policy. And that decision may be made for you. If state statute changes, I'm not going to come here and recommend that you violate state statute. So the decision might be made for you, but yet it still should come back to this body and you should be re-approved. Okay?
Max, just had a good time to talk about enrollment.
Perfect, go ahead.
Okay. We're at 401 in our elementary school as of this afternoon. We did have another family come in and talk about having another second grade student enroll. And so the board's aware we're at 52 in two sections in second grade, but things are looking good. It's nice to have increasing enrollment.
Did you want to take anything, any other elementary communication items?
Just that last week, we had vacation Bible school with all the local community faith communities. And we had over 300 students enrolled and the average daily membership was, as I understand, 290. So our halls were filled. There was lots of excitement and energy and it was really, really well done. I was very pleased with how everyone worked together. Our staff on all different ends of the building was amazing in accommodating the needs of all those kids and adults. So something to be proud of. Work is in progress, our buildings and grounds, maintenance people, food service people, everybody's working to get everything ready for our open house and for back to school. So pretty much right on track. It's good.
Any specific questions for Mary? All right, let's go to the secondary student handbook then.
All right. Well, this handbook was in need of some updates. And so essentially, we've gone from a 39-page handbook to a 14-page handbook. And we just did a lot of, a lot of the things that the elementary handbook and the staff handbook entailed, which was just really creating a lot of links for the policies that we have to have in there. We had a list of policies that were required to be in the handbooks and all of those are in here. But we are also aware that there are families without a way to download this or look at it online. And so we will have paper copies available during the open house. A lot of the, a lot of the changes that we made was really updating some of the wording and eliminating many different areas that just were not relevant anymore. And there were a lot of areas that overlapped with, with the activities handbook. And so we wanted to make reference to those things by providing a link to the activities handbook. And so we were hoping to just cut down on the redundancy of that. We also looked at a lot of our guidelines for attendance and lunch and then some of those procedures and just kind of updated those to match what the current procedures are. And what we wanna take a look at in the future is just making sure that we are staying relevant with what, with what we're saying. I spent a lot of time looking at area handbooks and some handbooks from, from schools from a good distance away and looking at wording and looking at some of the information provided in those. So it was trying to find a balance between making it too much and, but also having it enough where, where they don't, people don't feel like they're reading a large novel. And we wanna keep the important things in there and just create reference to those areas that they can go to. Any questions about the handbook at all?
That'd be a broken record, but that's fantastic. I had to look through all of them. I didn't know what to expect this. They are clean, very professional, extremely well organized and easy access. And if you have the ability, just jumping around and when you reference a policy, you can jump right into it and you know it well. It's fantastic.
And I, and I will say that this wasn't something that I just did alone. We had Cheryl was part of the group and Max was part of the group. And we, we sat down one day and went through the handbook line by line and just talked things out. And that really was the key to be able to streamline this a little bit.
Well, we think all of you.
Yeah, sounds to me like we sent you to Washington DC. Look with Congress, if you can get 60% less on that.
And then I just have a few communication items. Cassandra, Jackie, and Amy have been absolute rock stars in, in helping with our scheduling this summer. We have, it seems like every time we feel like we're making headway, some, another issue comes up and we have to, four of us sit down and look at it from a different angle. We are, we're getting close. We have, and most of our juniors and seniors are scheduled. We invited them to come in and the four of us just took them as they came in and went, and went through and finished up their schedules with them. We just, we're trying to find the balance of having enough staff and having the electives that, that students want, but also knowing that there are gonna be classes that we were not able to offer because of numbers and staffing and that not every student is gonna get what they had requested and even what they had put in at some of their alternatives. But we are to the point now where an email went out to the ninth and 10th graders this afternoon and we're inviting them to come in. And the more we can get in now, I think the easier it will be, well, the easier it will be for Jackie when, when school starts. We wanna make sure that, that our students are coming on the first day as much as we can, knowing what their schedule is. We're still working on getting locker numbers and nominations and room numbers and all of that on the schedule. So the schedule we're printing out for the students isn't necessarily full of information, but it has when they have their class and what the classes are. And so that'll be something that we're gonna just work on right up until, until open house. Six, seven, and eight will get their schedules at open house. And we'll be lining up those schedules with the teachers and things in the next week and those should be ready. Open house, we, we did invite our sixth graders to come in at, at four o'clock instead of five so that we could give out Chromebooks and take care of any housekeeping items. And then at the elementary and the high school, we're gonna, we'll have Chromebooks available and staff available to help any families that may not have been able to get their account set up through Infinite Campus. Life Touch Pictures will be that evening also. And it's, we're gonna work to make sure they have enough cameras so that they're, they can do it efficiently. The eighth graders through 12th graders, there are some of them working at a, on a social justice theater camp, which is going on this week. And they are creating their own script to, and it's about mental health and dealing with just different things in life. And Jen Wurz, again, who is fantastic with our theater program and all the, and all the help that she's getting with that. There is a group that is, is working with the, with the students this week and they have their performance for the public on Friday at four o'clock and it is free to the public. Anything else?
Any questions at all for David? Thank you. We're gonna go on to the activities handbook.
I have a question for David. Where are the root beer floats steering open house?
For students only.
Oh. Students only. I'm assuming everybody has a digital copy of the activities handbook, so you can just stop me if there's something that you want to go through, otherwise I'm just gonna highlight some of the changes. This was pretty much redone maybe two years ago where we kind of overhauled it. And so there isn't a lot of change, just like David mentioned. I did add the line to start with, with a link to the student handbook and just how this activities and what we do is an extension of the school day. And so all the policies that take place in the secondary building are effective for activities. And that's about it. There's some language changes on the registrations, fees, and forms. Honestly, if somebody doesn't pay their fee by 12 o'clock on the day of a contest, I don't tell them they can't perform. So we make accommodations for kids and we take care of it. And so sometimes there's extenuating circumstances where they can't afford it. Sometimes they just, quite frankly, it's not an issue. And so I would like to take that out of the handbook and not limit the students because they're the ones that pay the price for that. So you can see the yellow stuff is eliminated and the green stuff will be added just to simplify it. I should mention, if you approve this, I'm gonna clean it up, take it out, I'll resend it to you so that there's clear breaks in between the pages. I didn't wanna spend the time to do that right now because there's a lot of stuff that's gonna come out. So that the bulleted points will remain kind of on the same pages and activities done on the end get moved from page to page, it'll be fixed. Otherwise, just some change in language from "will" to "may." We don't have a situation where we're guaranteed access to a chemical counselor and things like that if somebody does have a chemical violation in the state high school league. And so we're gonna go with "may" instead of "will" because we can't guarantee that that's gonna be done. Some changes in the eligibility, academic eligibility, the seventh through 12th policy is really the same, so we can eliminate the seventh and eighth grade line, go seven through 12. And otherwise, the attendance policy needed to be redone due to the fact that we're no longer a seven class period and we're four. So students will be required to be in class for two consecutive class periods in order to be eligible to participate. And then if you see kind of the major new thing is at the end, we wanted to come, I think Matt Dickhouse in the community ed does such a fantastic job with his programs and you have a brochure and you really understand what's offered from our school and what his department offers. Unless you grew up in Painesville or you're from Painesville, you maybe don't have a clear understanding of how do I register for activities? What do you actually all have? So we wanted to, in essence, make a course catalog for the activities department and that's what's there. Should be hyperlinked. So, you know, the question was asked earlier about handbooks being changed. If we change an advisor, you guys are the ones that are approving those anyways, I'm just gonna change it in the handbook. The schedules are gonna be linked and so people can go in there. We don't have the ability yet because of Infinite Campus, but want them to be able to just click on a link and be able to pay and register for their things. We have the link to sports qualifying, physicals, and eligibility forms, so there should be no question as to what forms do they actually need if they're registering for things. And again, these will get cleaned up, so they're all kind of on appropriate pages together as we go. So I'm kind of excited about that. And then I think I'm gonna copy this document and shrink just that portion down and get a link on the activities portion of the website. So literally, you look for programs to regi, it'll just say program registration and it'll pull that stuff up so you can go right there. It won't have the full handbook. So if somebody just wants to sign their kid out for basketball, they don't need to thumb through all of the philosophy or the handbook stuff that maybe they're not interested in to get there, just to make it as simple as possible. I hope I didn't skip over anything or go too fast, but that's kind of the major things we're not really changing philosophically, what we're doing with our activities department. We're just trying to be more relevant for 2019 and how people register and how they're looking for things. It was difficult with Infinite Campus and not having JMC to do some of the communication stuff. So right now, students are allowed to participate with their forms in, but we've allowed them this fall to, to wait to pay until we're online and ready for it at that time. Does anybody have any questions first about the handbook? All right. So like I'm-
A question about Infinite Campus.
Oh, yeah.
Will that help us be able to keep like better, like track of who has ever participated and who's not, like for retention and of athletes? Cause like right now, how is that?
Yeah, our high school office does track that stuff, that participation, but I don't think it's as easy as it could be.
And this will help.
They utilize a Google spreadsheet and they just basically keep track of who's participating all. But by using Infinite Campus and doing this, it should build it right into their transcript. So like one thing that coaches have to do at the end of the season, they have to notify the office who completed the season because on their transcript, it should have that they participated as well as if they lettered. And so then they also have to let them know who lettered. So it should make that easier. The goal of this handbook was to make it easier on the parents and the student athletes. With the Infinite Campus thing, I think that, to be honest with you, I'm very hopeful for the things, but even I don't know 100% how it's gonna run. The training seemed like it was very user-friendly and way better than what we were using with JMC, but I haven't been able to utilize much with it at this point.
I just have one question. Maybe it's been answered. Do the parents have the ability to register the kids for sport online and pay online?
At this moment, no. Last year was the first time we did with JMC when we had, well, we're using our school today, actually. But because Infinite Campus has the ability to do that, we didn't wanna re-enroll something for this school year that we were gonna get rid of and then start something new. So the answer is currently no, but as soon as we're live with Infinite Campus, it will be the same thing as putting in lunch. There's gonna be a store there where they can do all of that stuff so they can participate or register in anything, put money in their lunch account, pay, I don't know if there's still Chromebook insurance or band instrument fees, any of that type of stuff. We have the ability to put all of that in there so they can pay online. I believe you can set up reoccurring payments for lunch if you want to and things like that, so.
And just to go back to the question about Infinite Campus, one of the reasons Infinite Campus was the vendor that we chose was because Infinite Campus is designed to be a one-shop data warehouse. So all of our data, whether you're talking about student assessment data, when you're talking about extracurricular data, you're talking about course data, all of our student data must be warehoused in Infinite Campus. It all has to be there. And that is, is one of the pieces that is the most appealing for Infinite Campus.
I think for assessment, we-
Yeah. There's nothing more frustrating than having a data management system that is supposed to warehouse all your data but can't. And so now when you go to do something, you have to extract part of the data from a data management system and another piece of data from separate standalone software and the two don't talk to each other. So it, yeah, it's, we're still in the infancy stages though, so it's gonna take a little bit of time to get it all rolled up and rolled out and get, using the system as it's intended. Any other questions about the handbook for Max?
I like it just like the rest of them. I would just impress this year. Felt everybody's gonna have any information they need at the fingertips if they want. Easy to get, too easy to get around. Very impressive.
All right, well, fall sports started for us on Monday, seven through 12 cross-country and nine through 12 volleyball, as well as nine through 12 football, so busy. And we are excited. We have an ice machine that got installed. Used to be Mr. Carlson's rooms, classroom 101 has been converted for storage. Donnie might have mentioned with the fire marshal, we were not in compliance with things in the gym and stored in the corners where there's fire exits and in the hallway and all of that kind of stuff. We just needed more storage space, so we were able to utilize a classroom and move some instructors around. In the backend of that, there was a, already a sink installed and so we had an ice machine installed on top of the counter. It's been working in, so far for three days, so. But that's installed and the nice part about that is, is there wasn't, it used to be a business office for the business department chair back when that was something that our school had, but that office has been converted into a training office. So we have Heartland Orthopedic that's gonna be doing some athletic training services for us that have space right off of- for us that have a space right off of there that has a door to go right to the ice, and it actually has a door to go into the CNA room as well. And inside the CNA room, we have, in the back corner, we've set up a table so that they can use that for taping and things like that with athletes. And then there's doors, and those doors can lock, and they're actually secure. You can unlock them from inside the athletic trainer's office, so they have a file cabinet, and they can keep records and things like that that need to be, that are privacy sensitive. So we're excited about that. That's kind of the main new things that we have going on for this fall right now as we get going.
Are those rooms going to be accessible to all sports?
Correct. Yeah. You mean the storage and the training or?
Yeah, and the ice machine, you know, so that all the coaches can get into.
Absolutely. Yep.
Perfect. When will the athletic trainers be available? Will they be here for competitions or?
So as of, the intent is to have them here one day, a week after school, just on an office hours, so athletes can go in there even if they maybe aren't in a particular sport during that season or something, but they have something going on as well as people that are in sport and just had had an injury and they can get assessed. But currently, Heartland Orthopedics is in the process of hiring somebody to make that happen, and so they're right now covering all of our activities with their current staff and hopes to have one person that's here all the time just to build the rapport and the relationship with the athletes to make that happen. So we have our, and I should clarify, our high, we don't have any coverage for our junior high activities.
Somebody available for us to see those rooms? Donnie have a key or?
I can, yeah, when this is over, I'd be more than happy to show you. Fair warning, the storage is dirty and wherever, like we haven't even really start, there's stuff in there, but we need to build shelves and we need to do that kind of stuff.
Would you guys flame worth it?
Absolutely. Yep, I'd be more than happy to.
Great.
Any other questions for me? Thank you.
So the board should then expect student handbooks. The staff handbook and the extracurricular handbook will be on the business agenda for August 24, is it?
Twenty-
27? August 27, two weeks from today. So it will be on the business agenda on that date. That leads us to the last item, which is requests for information and roundtable if there's any questions. I do have just a couple, one item particularly I wanted to touch base with the board on, but are there any requests for information or anything with that?
One thing we had talked about, I don't remember what it was, recently about free reduced lunches and how those students are served. So just more information on that if there-